The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor Viviano. Trustee Cusamano?
Clerk Cusamano here, appearing from McComb Township, all, McComb Township, Michigan, county of McComb, Michigan.
Thank you. Trustee Lucio?
Trustee Lucio, remotely from McComb Township, McComb County, and state of Michigan.
Trustee Oliver?
Trustee Oliver here, remotely from McComb Township, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Trustee Nevers?
Here, remotely from McComb Township, in McComb County, Michigan.
Treasurer Drollet?
Present, remotely from McComb Township and McComb County, Michigan.
Clerk Posey present, remotely from McComb Township in McComb County, and state of Michigan. Supervisor Viviano?
Present, remotely from McComb Township and McComb County, and state of Michigan.
All members are present.
We got to approval of the agenda. Clerk Posey or any corrections, additions, or relations?
Yes, Supervisor Viviano proposed to add, which was to add on to as number eight, under new business, approval of employee legal expense reimbursement. And also, we have an amendment to the number, in item number fourteen. The dollar amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and seven and seventy-four cents is being amended to...
It's being amended.
It's being amended. It'll be discussed during discussion. That's all I know.
Okay. Move to approve the agenda? As amended, as amended?
Support.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I suppose that the dollar amount is a transposition of digits, nothing significant, is it?
Actually, it is significant, Cusamano. The amounts presented in the original board packet are...
Mostly incorrect.
The per item is what we were quoted, but the, what we propose, the work we propose to do is going to be less than half of that amount, which we can cover at the time of the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's a motion by Treasurer Drollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the agenda as amended. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion passes. We got approval of the bills? Or motion? So move? Any discussion on the approval of the bills? Hearing none, there's a motion by Treasurer Drollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the bill round. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. Item four is approval of the previous meeting minutes from February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Do any board members have any addition, additions, or corrections to the previous meeting's minutes? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the previous meeting minutes from February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Supported.
Any discussion? Hearing none, there's a support by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting minutes. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. We on the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none, there's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet, to approve the consent items. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. We on a public comment? If you have a comment, please remember there's a three-minute time limit. Mr. Ivanowski, would you please open the floor for public comment?
The floor is open for public comments. If you're on a telephone, please press star nine to speak, or raise your hand if you have a computer connection to Zoom. There's one person that would like to talk, that will be Mr. Thomas Sorti. Mr. Sorti, can you unmute your phone, please? Mr. Sorti, can you hear us?
She pushed star six.
He is unmuted. I just don't know if he can hear us.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Sorti, can you please make sure your phone is not muted?
Here's Viviano, a computer, Mr. Ivanowski.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Here's Viviano, a computer, if I'm interpreting the screen in front of me privately.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if his mic is not on. He is unmuted from my side, but I, I don't hear him. I don't know if he, he can hear us.
Is there anybody else that left a comment?
Not so far. It's just Mr. Sorti.
Button he should try to push on his computer? Well... This is unmuted. He cannot hear you, Mr. Sorti. You want to take a minute and try and reconnect? Or perhaps try calling in on the phone?
Yeah, he can call on the phone. I will send them the phone links.
Can anyone hear me? I'm unmuted and I have my computer on.
Now you're down.
Okay.
So you're down.
All right. So I just have a simple question. I've been going through some, the state statute and cases. And where a township board, specifically McComb Township, has hired an employee via board action, I'm unable to find the statute or case law that would give the supervisor the authority to fire that individual without board approval. So maybe Mr. Tomlinson could give us an answer on that and I could find out more information. But that's all I have. Thank you. Sorry for the problems with the microphone.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment tonight, Mr. Ivanowski?
No, sir. That was it.
Okay. I will close public comment, and we will move on to new business. Item six is request to adopt the SEMCO ordinance, number two-seven-nine. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Mr. Tomlinson, would you mind giving us a brief run-through of what this is? You helped prepare this for us.
Sure. So under, under state law, we are required, or SEMCO, or any major utility, such as SEMCO, is required to obtain a franchise agreement, the form of the franchise agreement by statute. It can be either resolution or ordinance. Because it is more of a permanent nature, and we want to have a public record of it for purposes of being published in our ordinances, we have suggested the ordinance format. That is what we did previously. The, the, there's a current franchise agreement, which was for a period of thirty years. This is a, another franchise agreement for a period of thirty years, which is provided for in the statute. We've reserved the right, obviously, for permitting and for review of plans prior to major installations within our right-of-ways or within our community. The language is nearly identical to the previous, previously adopted ordinance, and we would recommend approval as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Certainly, Mr. Cusamano.
Mr. Tomlinson, as you may recall, I asked a question whether or not the natural gas utility ordinance generally needed to be revised. This one's tailored specifically to SEMCO. Mr. Chairman, I guess his question to the board as a whole is, it anticipated that we're going to update, or are we going to keep this natural gas franchise agreement targeted specifically to SEMCO? Unlike the electric utility ordinance, which is general. We call some communication regarding that. Also, when I searched for the original SEMCO franchise agreement, I was unable to find it in MIDI code. I asked for follow-up and arranged for MIDI code to be updated with the current SEMCO ordinance that's, I assume, when it passed this evening. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusamano. Mr. Tomlinson, do you have any follow-up to Mr. Cusamano?
Yes, and I understand what Mr. Cusamano was talking about, because immediately when I received this, I went to look at the ordinances and realized the natural gas was not included in our utility ordinance. I don't think that would be a bad move whatsoever to amend that ordinance to include natural gas, as well as the, the electrical utilities and any other major utility.
That's something that we will look at and look to put forth in future agendas.
Mr. Chairman? A general question to legal counsel. Mr. Tomlinson, to what extent is there, are these contracts guided by state statute and regulations? And to what extent are, do we, or either the parties, are there areas within these contracts that there is a certain amount of leeway? Or are these very consistent across communities?
They are very consistent across communities. In virtually all my communities, you have a franchise agreement that differs very little from what is provided. They are governed by state statute and the Michigan Public Service Commission. When it comes to, to rates and charges and taxes, that is something that is not reserved to us to, to have impact on. That is the Michigan Public Service Commission, and that's within their jurisdiction only. We only have certain degree of control over our right-of-ways and our public areas in the lands within our township from that perspective.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Hearing none. There is a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to adopt the SEMCO ordinance. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven, is request to adopt a resolution to establish the deputy compensations, compensation of salary and benefits.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to establish deputies' compensation, salaries, and benefits to be equivalent to the management positions in the township at a salary of eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And if second, I'd like to speak to it.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to make note that we have established salaries for managers in our contracts and with our employees. And I believe that the deputy position, certainly in my office and certain, the clerk's office, and I know you're still working on your office, are the equivalent of managers in, in every sense of the word, in that they are in charge of running, in some cases, larger departments even, mid-sized departments. So I think, rather than, I think the fairest way to peg these, the compensation, is to equivalent positions of responsibility, which I believe are the equivalent of a management position. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Drollet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like to mirror what Mr. Drollet said. I believe that it is definitely something that we needed to revisit. Their responsibilities are equivalent to managing the departments, and technically, they're our right-hand person. So I totally support what Mr. Drollet had to say.
Clerk Posey, I will echo both your comments and my observations. All of the three deputies in our township there, not ceremonial positions in the slightest. These are very important duty-filled roles that they, they occupy. I think all three of us are lucky to have such good employees that we can't wait for us.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak on this issue?
Sure.
This is the first I've heard of the true amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The actual resolution ties into the ASB contract, which I assume reads, effective March tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the annual salary shall be the average salary of the manager positions as set forth in the agreement between the McComb Township and the ASB Local nineteen seventeen, point four-three, council twenty-five. In its current form, and is may be amended from time to time through the collective bargaining process. There's several issues of management and labor in, in the negotiations of contracts. I know Mr. Sorti, in previous meetings before I was on this board, attempted to tie the compensation for the elected officials to the ASB contract. That failed. Several attempts failed. On November tenth, two thousand twenty, before this, after the election, but before this board was seated, Trustee Oliver moved to increase the salaries of the elected officials, which passed by the order three-mo. I would just like to point out that it was hard to figure out how that average was arrived at, because the former compensation proposals for the elected full-time officials kept referencing directors, and I think directors has been used interchangeably with managers. And if someone could explain the distinction, and whether or not the compensation schedule, the wage schedule, rather, at the, at the attached, appended to the ASB contract is accurate, most if not all. Well, let's ask the question.
I can, I can address your last concern. The ASB contract, as you're reading it, outlines specific positions. There are director positions. There is an assistant director position, as far as level of compensation. And then there are managers, who goes on to supervisors and down the line.
So I can address, Mr. Chairman, I think, a part of Trustee Cusamano's, early part of his question. With regard to establishing the compensation, the eighty-six, four twenty-eight, I took the five manager positions in the contract, and added them up and divided by five to come up with the actual amount, which I thought should be stated for the record.
So that would be the records manager, manager currently at eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Elections manager, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. The engineer manager, eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
No, I believe you may be looking at previous years.
Yeah.
I'm looking at two thousand twenty.
You need to look at the twenty-twenty-one numbers, which is the last number in that column.
Okay. I'm sorry. My fault. So eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents. The engineer manager, eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The facility ground manager, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And then there's an information technology manager, eight hundred, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents. So you did the calculation, Trustee, sorry, and Treasurer Drollet?
Yes, I added those five management positions and divided by five to come up with the average.
So it's by understanding that they will be tied direct, the compensation will be directly tied, not to their performance, necessarily, but to the ASB contract irrespective of their performance, according to this resolution?
Well, performance is dependent upon the full-time elected official, which these individuals are at real employees. So if somebody's not living up to the expectations of their, of their position, it can be, they can be let go at any time.
But their salary cannot be diminished, according to the resolution, unless this board acts again?
Board is able to act at any time, that's correct. I believe, I don't have the, the resolution directly funding me, but was it not in the resolution to be up to that amount, because it is...
Yes.
So it's up to that amount? So they could be, their salary could be diminished, or they could be hired in at a lower salary?
Well, I'm reading, so paragraph one, effective March tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the annual salary shall be mandatory in the legal terms, the average salary of the manager position set forth in the agreement. And it continues to reference the ASB collective bargaining agreement. What is the current salary of these positions? Are they different?
They are, I do not believe, different. In my office, I believe it's seventy-eight thousand and something. I don't have it at the top of my head.
Seventy-eight thousand, so this represents...
About eight percent, I can tell you. Up, up to.
And the rationale presented by the supervisor indicates our deputies perform the same duties as managers. I assume that that performs the same duties as managers over the same personnel, correct?
Not on the same personnel. There is no manager in the treasurer's office. There is no manager position in the, is there a manager position in the clerk's office?
There's a records.
The records manager position in the clerk's office.
In other words, there's no overlap of their duties, is that correct?
Not my, not my collection.
For my, for myself, for myself, I mean, my deputy serves as an extension of me, whenever I need her to research, take over, talk to people, communicate. So I, I don't have direct supervision like they do of specific departments. I oversee mostly directors. My deputy helps me do that.
It's my understanding that the implication of this is that if a deputy comes on with little or no experience at some point in the future, that they're going to get the salary irrespective? Because of the mandatory language?
Again, for, any floor members of the board can stop that happening.
Mr. Cusamano, I would be willing to amend my motion to say up to the management position, to give flexibility to the department, to the elected officials, if that would be acceptable to the second or motion, to amend the resolution, because I agree that in the future, we may be hiring people that may have different levels of experience.
I appreciate the nuance. Thank you.
I should comment that part of the resolution, which we didn't make in the motion, was to allow for part-time. Which means that anybody who wanted to retain a part-time deputy, they do so for reduced hours, but then necessitate reduced gross pay, meaning that they would get an hourly rate equivalent to the, whatever the deputy's salary is to those positions.
Chairman, if it's acceptable, I'd then like to amend the motion before, so the resolution before, to directly attorney to amend the resolution before us, to state that it shall, it can be up to the average salary of managers in the ASB contract, up to the eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So that their flexibility is retained, in the event that employment changes in some capacity, and different people have to be brought on, to do different levels of experience. That's unacceptable. Amendment to the second or?
Yeah.
So the amended, amended motion is seconded.
So we direct Mr. Tomlinson to amend the resolution to allow it to be up to that level of eighty-six, four twenty-eight, the average salaries of the management positions, rather than shall be.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that that amount will be inserted into the resolution as well, the eighty-six thousand.
Eighty-six thousand, eighty-six thousand is representative of the current average of the manager salaries. And I believe the reason it was worded that way in the resolution, to be the average of the salaries, is so that we wouldn't have to revisit this every time salaries shifted. The amount itself is only representative of the current pay. They are still tied to the average salaries of the ASB-recognized management positions.
And just for the resolution's information, this would terminate upon the conclusion of the current term of the board, correct?
The resolution?
Or is that resolution binding on future boards?
I believe this resolution will be binding on future boards until they decide to change it.
So getting out the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any discussion on this motion?
Just one quick moment. Just so I understand it, so it's discretionary on the department that's, they will decide the increase of this salary?
The department has the authority to, my understanding is the department has the authority to full-time elect. The, the full-time elected officials have the authority to pay up to a management salary for their position.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Do we know the average salary for a deputy in like-size communities with like-size people working under them?
I, I don't know that number. I do know that when it comes to, we've spoken about, when it comes to deputy treasurers specifically, in some communities, it's purely a ceremonial or, or a non-position because it's required by statute. You know, they pay them a dollar, they show up.
So we tend to pay the dollar, but they come in once a year.
Okay, so they're not there working every day?
It's not a working, it's not a working position.
So theories substantially, depending on what the position represents, what they choose to represent in their community.
And we, we did adjust this, I believe, not we did this board, but the previous board did adjust deputy salaries last year, I believe it was?
About a year, yeah, a little over a year.
Prior to that, has there ever been, has there been an increase in the last?
There was.
I know last time we were talking, the last increase was in two thousand and four.
There's periodic, we went back and looked at some past resolutions. There were some periodic increases. It seems like every board vote approached them differently. Some did it as a percentage of the elected, some did it as a set dollar amount. But there wasn't some specific method of determining this amount?
So it looks to be like about an eight-thousand-dollar increase, because they're about seventy-eight now, or like eighty-six?
Maximum.
Or about four dollars?
Our, our intention was to set a rate that was more commensurate with their duties, than, than looking at what they had made in the past.
Sure. I just, I think the residents are going to look at it as a bottom line, to defend like, okay, we're giving them an eight-thousand-dollar raise. But I look at it as, I don't work with them every day. I know in discussion here, saying that you're maybe, the amount of work that they do, I want people to be compensated justly, absolutely. But I feel, you know, four dollars an hour, in my opinion, in today's world, is not really unrealistic.
If I may, in the past, we, I've done comparables. We've done research on, when we were, elected officials were doing research on what is comparable to our area. And so I looked at both the elected... And so I looked at both, um, the elected officials' salary plus the deputies, and, um, what I found in communities our size, uh, we were about middle, we were high, we were low, and the same went for our deputies.
Thank you. If I may also just, um, respond. Within my office, the deputy is responsible for negotiating rates with banks on, uh, all kinds of financial instruments, and helping guide investment policy. He has many years' experience in banking prior to coming here. And the, uh, the type of, if, if, I was unfortunate enough that I didn't place somebody with that kind of experience that is also looking to save the township money and make sure we get the best, you know, possible return. It would be a challenging thing to do. So his work is easily equivalent of management position in, um, you know, in, in most departments. You know, the level of responsibility is substantial.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment. I suppose one of the problems, the biggest problems I have is, is the on-again, off-again uses of comparables in others, communities similarly sized and situated. I don't know why there isn't a consistent measurement or standard being applied for purposes of determining what's adequate compensation. I think that in order to retain credibility, that without cherry picking certain facts and, and to suit a particular or, or ordained conclusion would be important to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're good, Mr. Kuzma. I mean, uh, actually, you know, trustee Kuzma's thoughts. It is sometimes very difficult to peg, when you look at Shelby Township pays their deputy treasurer a dollar, because they come in once a year, they're semi-equivalent sized community. It's very, it's sometimes hard to measure, uh, your position, position within the communities, because they have vastly different approaches to the, the statutory and mandatory positions.
Vastly different duties.
Exactly, vastly different duties. So it is sometimes challenging. So when looking at the issue, we're saying, you know, the work being done by the managers around by our, the deputies in these positions, what are they equivalent to within other departments? And it's essentially equivalent of a management position.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one last point. I don't want anyone to believe that I don't appreciate the employees of the township, but I believe that the purpose of the board trustees is, is to represent the taxpayer. And being a fiscal conservative, um, I want to bring the most value to the township for the tax dollars that are, you know, expended by the residents. I would also add that, um, we are in the middle of a historic COVID pandemic, and that many persons in our community have been financially struck with hardship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I will add one last comment, uh, that one of the purposes, the full part-time provision is being inserted into this resolution, uh, is my own deputy, as invaluable as she has been to me, um, is going to transition into a part-time position in the very near future, um, which gives me the benefit of all of her collective years of experience and wisdom. But there'll be a cost savings there for the township in general, as, as I have gotten more accustomed to my own role and, uh, I'm, I'm a little more capable than I was when I first started, uh, assuming a lion's share of the duties in the supervisor's office. There is no more discussion, we call for a vote, um, through the motion by Treasurer Dolett, supported by Clerk Posey to adopt the resolution to establish deputy salaries. Clerk Posey, we call her all.
Treasurer Dolett?
Yes.
Clerk Posey?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
No.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trust, our supervisor, Gabya?
Yes, the motion carries. We have item eight, is the addition of our proposal, that on, uh, is approval of employee legal expense reimbursement. Is there a motion?
So hope, Mr. Chairman. Support?
Mr. Chairman? Treasurer Dolett?
Um, if it's acceptable to make this a motion, I'd like to amend the, uh, resolution to state that upon the presentation of receipts.
We can, we do, I have learned since that our attorney has all of those receipts, we actually have them with me now. Okay. But yes, we can amend it.
I, I can amend that.
Okay.
It's still probable, I'm making sure the, so we require receipts for pay.
Thank you.
So, do we have a second on your amendment?
Trustee understood.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have several questions. It's my understanding that the employees, without any board action, engaged attorneys, was there any guidelines or rates that were outlined for those employees to apply? By, or was it just left to their discretion?
As I understand it, this was, I was not here at the time.
Madam Chair.
Don't try not to take offense.
Please, I, I apologize. Uh, I was here and I can add to that. Uh, I have spoken with two of the three people that were discussing, and at the time, they were told, because Mr. Bussorti was representing the township, that they needed to, to have, uh, legal representation going down to the, uh, grand jury, that's a pretty heady thing. And, and, uh, they were left to their resources about getting a lawyer. And, uh, they were also told that, uh, they would not recoup any of this money until everything played out and they understood that, you know, they were cleared in, in any, uh, uh, problem there. And because this has taken so long, my gosh, it's probably been, what, four years? Okay.
Almost five years.
A long time. They need to be made whole. And, uh, uh, it was a promise, I remember discussing it with them, and Mr. Bussorti captured, uh, I guess if I remember correctly, Mr. Bucci had, uh, agreed to turn in sixty-six thousand dollars, uh, to the FBI, and then Mr. Bussorti in turn said, let's get that money back here. So it was, uh, put in, I don't want to say advanced, but it was there for just such a purpose. Those were my, uh, thoughts and, and what I remember. Did that help?
Well, I suppose, from your recollection, the answer is no, there were no guidelines or hourly rates or?
That is correct. They were, they were left to their own resources on what they were going to do and who they would. I mean, it was, it was a pretty scary time for them.
And what was the reason, if you know, that Bussorti had a conflict of interest with?
Well, he was.
Any criminal action against Dino Bucci for embezzlement of the sixty-six thousand dollars from the concrete job in the township hall?
Well, I'm not privy to all of that, all I know is that Mr. Bussorti was representing the township. And because of that, he could not represent the, the three people that went to the grand jury, that's all I know. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, one other question. There was a statute that was quoted or cited by our current legal counsel, Mr. Tomlinson. I had the opportunity to pull that statute. It is drawn from the Governmental Liability for Negligence Act, MCL six ninety-one point four eight zero eight. This statute, uh, deals with, in the first part, negligence caused by the officer or employee. It appears that when interpreting the statutes, my view, that it, that it basically has to do with negligence and civil actions against the governmental entity where the employee is involved in the course and scope of his employment. I don't believe that this particular, uh, instance, it's been described as Dino Bucci's criminal case before grand jury would apply to that particular Governmental Liability for Negligence Act. I would also add that, um, I'm trying to determine whether or not any of the collective bargaining agreements allow for the compensation of, are any of these employees members of the collective bargaining unit?
All of them are. All three of them are, that's.
My reading of the collective bargaining unit, the ASME contract deals with legal representation in actions regarding civil liability, not criminal cases, therefore, I would like legal counsel's opinion whether or not this would violate the state statutes regarding compensation outside of the collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Tomlinson?
I don't have an answer to that type of question at this point, but I would note the section, the action or the statute that's being referred to deals both with civil and criminal ac- actions, and that's why I specifically in my memorandum quoted paragraph three of that statute, because that's the applicable paragraph to these employees, and it does cover both criminal, uh, representation in connection with civil or criminal litigation or an investigation or proceeding. Uh, so, uh, I, I think that's the accurate, uh, portion, as, as, as with regards to, uh, if there's a conflict of some sort with para and the contracts of the individual employees. I haven't researched that i- issue, um, but I would submit that if, if, if presented, I would expect that the, uh, union would likely enter into a lot of understanding to provide for this.
I don't know if you have seen Arissa, it's pure.
Para.
Public Employee Relations Act.
Um, I would like to add to, to respond a little bit, Mr. Kuzma. Uh, the way I view this is, um, we, we had, we had employees that were dragged down to federal court, uh, not as investigated or anything of that nature, but they were asked to bear witness to our former trustees wrongdoing. And they were asked to testify to the grand jury in their capacity as township employees. Uh, they were directed by the previous administration to retain their own counsel at their own expense and were promised to be reimbursed once the matter's concluded. Mr. Bucci's guilt or innocence is no longer in doubt, he has pled guilty. As far as I understand it, there is no further looking into to any other person at our township. I view this as one more statute that's putting that, our chapter behind us. And I, I think it's something we're, we are morally obligated.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may just add to my, my answer, I, and, and I think Mr. Kuzma will bring somewhat of a good point about it, whether it's additional compensation. I, I don't know how it would be additional compensation when it's merely a reimbursement of an expense that they had to incur, not of their own choosing. And, uh, I, I can, I'm pretty sure that the contract provides for reimbursement of exper- expenses incurred during the course of employment. Given that there's statutory authority to grant this and reimburse for these expenses, I, I don't see how it in any way would violate the statute or the, the, um, the issues related to the contract with regard to compensation, because it's a mere reimbursement of an expense.
I feel, uh, insert some information for you, in the previous, um, contract collective bargaining agreement, it did not address any type of reimbursement for this type of situation. It was negotiated in the last contract, there's language in there for it, for this exact reason, but that wasn't, um, in the collective bargaining agreement at the time this happened to them.
And still, we're talking about expending twenty-one thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money on a representation made by town or society, a former attorney without board approval, temporary authority to take action to expend public funds rest with this board, not with Mr. Bussorti. On that basis, I would urge my colleagues to reject this application, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Um, I, I share, uh, some of trustee Kuzma's concerns that there should have been board authorization. Um, at the same time, I also recognize the position that employees in this township were put in, uh, when, um, you know, members of the board have engaged in, you know, illegal activity, known as illegal activity, and they're being hauled before, uh, grand juries and so forth, and being advised allegedly by our township attorney that they should get, uh, representation. And, you know, if I was an employee and I was told by the township attorney that I should get represented, if I was verbally told that either would be compensated, I wouldn't know what to do. But I would certainly be very concerned about making sure I, I tried to do the right thing. I would, uh, but I do understand, um, you know, trustee Kuzma's point, that ideally, uh, we wouldn't be having this conversation today if in the past, uh, the previous board had made a motion and approved payment for these funds. That would be very clear what the, what the intent was and what the, uh, where the authority was coming from. So I would hope that in the future, whether it's through resolution or through, um, some other mechanism, that we, uh, ensure that we don't have lack of clarity in the future. But at the same time, I, I, I just don't think we can stick it to these employees, uh, and expect them to pay expense that they feel they were told they need to incur. So I'm, I'm conflicted on the issue, and I understand your point. And I hope that we can address it in the future by establishing some sort of resolution or ordinance that clarifies an issue like this.
Mr. Chairman, one last point, um, responding to Treasurer Dolett. If I get subpoenaed to go testify in court, I go and testify in court. I am a citizen of the United States of America, the state of Michigan, I cooperate with law enforcement, I have nothing to hide. There were no guidelines, in essence, this board is voting to make good on a blank check which was handed to these employees to hire outside counsel with no review by this board. That is fundamentally wrong and an abuse of the position of legal counsel to the extent that he's not here to speak, former legal counsel. He's not here to speak for himself whether or not he made that representation, I'm taking it as true that he did, but he lacked the authority to make that commitment by the taxpayers of the township. Thinking that's all I have on the manners, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
I was, uh, I was very torn on this particular issue, and not so much because of contracts or, uh, what Mr. Bussorti had said in the past to these employees, but I was more concerned with, are we reimbursing for people that may or may not have played a part in any of this, um, wrongdoing that happened? And I would just ask, um, our current attorney, do we know of anything that, you know, if, I know it's, it basically said, when this is over, and, you know, based on how many times it's been delayed, is it already over? Who knows? But do we know if any of these three are a target of the investigation still? Or were implicated in any wrongdoing, or where we stand on that, do we have any information on that?
So from the, from the, uh, receipts and the, uh, some of the billables, including some of the cover or some of the explanation letters that were given, uh, and submitted with the request, uh, just the opposite, it basically is indicated that they are witnesses, that they were directed to come and testify, um, meet with investigators prior to grand jury, uh, provide testimony at the grand jury, which of course is, is, uh, is, uh, not subject to public disclosure. And there is nothing to indicate that they were ever a target of the invest- investigation, but merely witnesses who may have had evidence and/or, uh, other testimony that would assist them in, in, uh, going after trustee Bucci. So there's nothing in there based upon also the, the, there being refunds of monies that were otherwise being held by the attorneys as part of the retainer. That clearly directs to me that, uh, that they, they perceive this as being concluded with these individuals. Uh, because I hate to say, my brethren, we, we, we don't always like to give money back. And, uh, that's a, that's a strong indicator, at least to me, that, uh, they were not considered targets and were merely compelled as witnesses to appear on this.
One other comment on the side of that, it's just, I guess it's a more of a experience thing. I've never been in the public sector other than now, but I have been in the private sector for over twenty years. And I know that one of my employees at my agency promises something to a. promises something to a customer or promises something to one of our employees, I stand by it. I stand by it as that is an extension of me. Now, was he, did he have the authority to do that? No. But we do right now. So when you say it should have been approved by the board, we have the opportunity to do that right now. So we either say yes or no. So I think it is our determination right now, do we back up what this employee said to our employees? As we're going to see them through this and make them whole, as you had said. I hate to see innocent people out money for being dragged into something that they had been part of. And if our attorney's saying that as of now, they don't appear to be targets of the investigation, they've been waiting four years with their hard-earned money out of their pocket, possibly out of their savings, retirement funds. I can't see making them bear the brunt of this financially when the township made a promise, whether it be an employee or a board member. You understand, you didn't have the authority, but we do right now.
I'd like to comment one more thing, but I think you just said it off, so.
I was gonna comment. You said it off clearly, and thank you. I had to say the same thing. I'm a bit sober. When my people do something, I stand behind them. And I understand where you're at, it's still taxpayers' money. But these employees did not ask for none of this. They didn't ask for the treatment, nor did they ask for to be going down to the federal building and testify. And just hearing stories of going through that didn't sound too printed start with. So yeah, I'm with you, Mr. Lucino.
Mr. Lucino, I would like to add that over and above the fear factor involved in going to a grand jury, I don't know how many people had to do that. I have not, if it would be very fair, but there is the implication that because they were called down, perhaps they were guilty of something. So that is in and of itself, something that they had to deal with, you know, well, does everybody think I was involved in this? No, I believe that after this amount of time, and you know, the investigation was it just exploded exponentially with a lot of different townships. Had they been guilty of anything, it would have come out by now. And as Mr. Tomlinson said, as far as he's concerned, there's no implication that any of them had anything to do with it. They were representing the township in their testimony. So they have endured the slings and arrows of rumors, and you know how vulnerable it's been to me.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, that maybe one of the board members has information of the effect of whether or not there were any employees other than these three that testified without lawyers, without any adverse effects.
My understanding is there were three other employees that testified. One chose to do so without an attorney. One chose to not seek its reimbursement, because he wants to put the whole dark matter behind him. And one employee is no, one former employee is no longer a employer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Should we call the question?
Oh, I wanna have one more statement.
Oh, okay.
I can't be, I don't think trustee Kuzmato and trustee Lucino are actually technically saying different things. Trustee Kuzmato wants to ensure that these type of payments are approved. He wants to ensure that it's done in a legal manner. May question whether or not, and that's the issue we're deciding now, whether or not this is appropriate to approve. But it must be approved by the board, and you know, trustee Lucino's pointing out that that's in fact what we are doing now. So you know, what I think I'm asking myself is, if regardless of whether Mr. Assorti made a statement to any effect, regardless of whether what people leave, do we now think it's the right thing to reimburse employees for their expenses in this situation? As a decision that we are making now. So I don't know that necessarily is legally a question of what, you know, what was promised. It's now, what do we do and what is the right thing? And then to Mr. Kuzmato's point, we are approving a payment legally as a warrant. So I don't think it's a conflict necessarily, it's just a question of what we lose right to be able to do.
Treasurer Gillette. There is no more discussion. There is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, I'm sorry, a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve a reimbursement of legal expenses. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato.
No.
Trustee Lucino.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. We got item nine, as a request to award the Macomb Corners Park 2021 concessions RFP 2000. Option one. Your motion.
So.
Carl, are you available?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evening, board members. Parks Recreation Department is requesting permission to extend the contract for concessionaire services at Macomb Corners Park. In 2020, a contract was awarded to scoop and twist of Macomb LLC to provide that service. They paid the township $800 per month. We were very happy with their service in spite of the unusual circumstances that 2020 brought us. There's a provision in the contract to extend for up to two additional years, one year at a time. We are requesting the renewal for the first additional year at this time. I've included the provision of the contract regarding this and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment and question. Mr. DeCaro, I spoke with you earlier today regarding that this is more properly characterized as a franchise agreement. Do you remember that conversation?
I do. Yes, sir.
I asked whether or not, or why not rather, the supervisor was not able to, since there was no outlay or purchase or expenditure of $5,000, why the supervisor's office was unable to effectuate the option or to execute the option. Back in the book, and confirmed that this went out to bid back in March of 2000. Back in June, March of 2020. And that there was only one bid that was received. Is that correct? After what I've been?
That's correct. It's just been past practice to come before the board, you know, with transparency to get it approved for the additional year. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to do.
But it's $4,800.
I'm sorry?
$4,800 coming into the coffers of the township.
That is correct. It's $800 per month.
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman.
This is something that our purchasing specialists made note about. Policy and under my umbrella of authority, under a certain under that limit currently that's not, since this is bringing in money and not spending money, my authorization policy is $5,000.
That comes our way. Mr. DeCaro, is there any provision for fielding complaints by persons, or were there any consequences found under your knowledge?
They call, obviously a patron could call our office at any time, but most of the feedback we get about the concessionaire has been very positive.
Comment, Mr. Kuzmato, is that if it's us taking in money, this vendor is going to be taking in money, so.
That's correct.
Really good reason for the board, because again, if I had unilateral ability to approve these, I could give them to anybody, and not necessarily the person who deserves it or has bid on it properly. So it's probably better that we keep the pressure very low when it comes to setting up a concessions agreement with one of our vendors.
So I take that to be, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one question from Mr. DeCaro. I assume they're adequately insured and naming the township as additional insured for any.
That's correct. It's all spelled out in the, you know, in the contract what was needed in the RFP, but yes, they had their insurances.
Mr. Chairman, I am a bit skeptical personally about until I have a taste test personally for the park this summer, I will. I'll support it this time.
Conditional, conditional approval.
Yes.
Approval of a taste test. That themselves, and then that's board. Well, if there's no more real discussion, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the annual extension to twist. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Clerk Posey, yes, Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato.
Yes.
Trustee Lucino.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
We got item 10, as a request to approve, to amend pump station number eight upgrades from $192,200 to $251,400. It is project number 201473. Mr. Wanglin, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for permission to amend pump station number eight upgrade from $192,000 to $200,000 to $251,400. This item was previously approved on an agenda, I believe it was November 24th of 2020. After further discussion with my staff and reevaluating this project, we feel that a standby generator and some additional concrete are needed for this project. This standby generator will help ensure that pump station eight stays up and running in case of a power outage. This will also give the department the ability to sell one of the mobile generators that's currently in the barn at Water and Sewer. So I'm recommending, I am requesting we approve this financial upgrade. One other sidebar note that come to our attention about 48 hours ago, courtesy of Chief Phillips, is that this that this standby generator portion of this upgrade will be eligible for a grant through the Hazard Mitigation Assistant Grant Program. We've received word as recently as the morning that there's a good chance that this grant will get approved, or this request will get approved for at least the reimbursement of the generator portion of this financial upgrade. So that's good news. Thank you to Chief Phillips on that regard. And then we're in the process of getting the grant moving forward, getting it filled out. And it looks favorable that that will get approved. So with that, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Wanglin, a couple of points I just want to reiterate. These upgrades are coming out of the Water and Sewer capital improvement budget. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
We've gone over when we adapted the capital improvement plan, I believe it was back in December, that fund is. Yeah. Do you know approximately of the $60,000 change here, how much of it is the generator versus the rest of the improvements?
Yes, I do. It's in your packet, I believe, Mr. Supervisor. It's line items 13 and 14. I believe the generator portion is about $20,000. And then the gas service line to the generator is about $4,000. And it's my understanding, so $24,000 would be part of that grant program. Yes.
And just one more point, as we discussed when you brought this to my attention. One of the benefits of this is that it, well, it's an automatic kick on like other generators, and we will dramatically decrease the likelihood of anybody on that sewer line getting backup if we were to.
Yes, yes, that's correct. That's correct. This generator, like all of our generators, will be exercised, will run once a week to keep it functional and make sure everything's working properly. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments to the board?
Mr. Clarification, Mr. Wanglin, did you say that the grant the grant amount that we're hoping that will be approved for is approximately $24,000?
That's what I've been led to believe, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the pump station number eight upgrades from $192,200 to $251,400. Project number 201473. Any last discussion on that item, the motion? Here we go, there is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the pump station upgrades. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, supervisor, Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzmato.
Yes.
Trustee Lucino.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
We got item 11, as a request to install the streetlight at the intersection of 22 Mile Road and North Avenue at $0. Move to approve. Do you need this? Mr. Van Teflin, can you give us a brief?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. We received a request from a resident who lives in this area of 22 Mile and North Avenue to install a streetlight to improve the traffic situation over there. It's fairly dark just because of the area that it's in. As we would normally do, we contacted DTE for an estimate. Luckily, there is a utility pole that is close enough to the intersection that can be utilized to hang one of those Cobra lights on that we've seen go up on several intersections in the township recently. So the cost of the project is more than offset by the three-year revenue that they would get from the lamp charge that they give us as a credit towards the construction. So as stated earlier, there is no cost for the construction installation of the streetlight. However, it will cost us an annual lamp charge of $268.92. If the board votes to go ahead with this, we will get with DTE, have them provide us with a proper agreement, and then get this on the list for them to install probably within the next few months. Be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Teflin. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that the $268 lamp charge for you will come from the general fund.
That is correct.
Thank you.
There is no more discussion. There is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the streetlight at 22 and North Avenue. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, supervisor, Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzmato.
Yes.
Trustee Lucino.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is a request of authorization for Fishback to provide due diligence and engineering design services for Meyer Inc. Mr. Van Teflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, we received a request from Fishback, who is one of our, one of two consultants, engineering consultants that the township uses. But they're also an engineering consultant for Meyer. Meyer is considering putting a facility into the Macomb Township. And they have, since they have a longstanding relationship with Fishback, they are requesting that they be able to utilize Fishback to do the design work for the site. The way the agreement that we have with Fishback works is they cannot do private work in the township unless they have prior authorization from the township to do it. So they have provided us with the written request, which is our normal process. So they have provided us with, with the written request, which is our normal process. We do have another consultant that typically does the review of private work. AW is the other company. That is their typical responsibility. So if this site came in with a different engineer, he doesn't would still do that, that work. So it doesn't cause any coordination issues for us. There's no cost to the township. I don't see any potential for a conflict of interest. So I am recommending that this item be approved by the Board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Here.
Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tifflin. You're stating that we have another contract that could do the work. What would be the advantage to the township by having Fishback do it?
My personal opinion is if I have somebody that I have a relationship with, I can probably make sure that things are done better than I can if I've got an engineering department working for a developer that I don't have a relationship with. So that, that would be a positive for me. They know our standards. They know what we want. They know how we want it. And it works out good for us. We don't routinely do this. We have had situations before where AW used to do a lot of private work in the township. They had started a number of projects. They're still working on a number of projects for developers. And we've allowed them to continue doing that work for the developers. And we've had Fishback do the planner view, so we avoid that conflict of interest. So we have been able to work through this. It doesn't really cause us too much, too much of a headache. And it's actually harder, honestly, to have AW doing the private work because Fishback doesn't normally do the public work. But in this situation, we don't have, you know, a real concern.
Thank you. Let's get past the motion again. We'll make the motion.
That's official. So any further discussion on the motion we just made? All right, hearing now, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the authorization for Fishback to provide engineering for Meyer. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 13 is a request to amend McComb Township Court of Ordinances, Chapter 17, Division 4, Section 17-134, required public improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. As the Board's aware, on occasion, we do get requests from developers who have completed the vast majority of the work for their developments. This is for the single-family residential development site kind of doing or something. And the only thing that's outstanding are items such as sidewalks, pathways, and landscaping work that cannot be done during the winter months. I think it was about a month ago, I came to the Board with an extension of time for a development who was in that position. We have looked at the ordinance. The ordinance does require those improvements. It's very clear. And that's why we have been doing these extensions of time. What's before you tonight would allow the engineering department to administratively approve these, subject to the approval and agreement with the other departments. So that these, this item doesn't have to go before the township board. It's the same request to extend the landscaping and sidewalk work until June 30th. That language is in the amendments and the ordinance. So we're really just codifying what the Board has already been approving and has historically been approving. So with that, we're recommending approval. Be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Van Tifflin? Any questions? No discussion? Hearing now, there is a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to amend the court of ordinances for the required public improvements. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. We got item 14 is a request from Michigan Department of Transportation to participate in upgraded improvements along Hall Road Romeo Plank Road to township, Romeo Plank Road to township limits in the east. The amended amount is going to be. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear the amended amount. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. A few years ago, when M59 Hall Road was reconstructed between the Sandig Expressway in Unica and Sterling Heights, all the way to Romeo Plank. McComb Township, as well as the other municipalities that have frontage on that section of Hall Road, participated in some upgrades. These were upgrades to make the corridor look a little bit better than it had previously. These include the black mast arms that everybody's seen, the LED street signs, decorative crosswalks that are at the intersections. On our side, we chose to upgrade the sidewalk, the five-foot sidewalks and the eight-foot sidewalk that are always required and be required of what else we're building. In our gap, we gap for the program. So with the proposed construction beginning for the next section, Romeo Plank and 984, MDA has put together another package for the local municipalities to consider, little township, Chesterfield Township and McComb Township in this case. And what it was in the original package was part of the original pricing that they had given us. Since then, we've had extensive discussion internally. We've had extensive discussion with our neighbors as well as MDA. And we have an amended proposal that the total amount was just read off, $116,955.10. But I'd like to break it down for the Board so that you know exactly what we're recommending. The eight-foot white pathway, instead of the five-foot sidewalk, that's $87,736.79. The black mast arms at all of the intersections, that's at a total of $10,414.18. And then the LED street name signs would be installed at Greshit Avenue and North Avenue. The reason for those two intersections being chosen is those actually go through, all the way through the intersection of M59 or Hall Road. Whereas Park Road, Hydrate, basically that end, and then Hydrate at least takes up on the south side, but it doesn't go all the way through. And just LED street signs, these actually light up at night. You can see them a little bit better. If, if we go with the standard street signs at the other intersections, they'll be just like every other or a lot of other intersections, where it's reflected sign in your headlights actually showing you what street you're about to cross. So with that, there was, I believe the Board received an amended contract today that reflects this new pricing. And I believe that MDA put in that contract $117,000. That's obviously around number. When this project actually gets bid and built, then we'll get billed for the actual, the true number, based on the conversation I've had with MDA. It looks like the bid numbers are going to be very close, maybe slightly under what they quoted us. So I think the 117 is conservative. So what we're asking for tonight is approval for this, this plan of action and, and the ability to sign the contract for the supervisor not signing the contract. And then as far as our other neighbors go, we at Chesterfield Township approved the black mast arms and the LED street signs for one intersection that they have. And Clinton Township is looking at the same Greshit and Roseback slash North Avenue intersection that we are. They may do some others, but you know, that'll be their choice. You know, because, you know, they have additional streets on the south side of that 59. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Van Tifflin, I'm going to add to Mr. Van Tifflin's explanation. So the, anybody, I think of residents who saw the original board back in number, that would have been the original total of the entire improvements as first presented to us. When Mr. Van Tifflin brought it to my attention, I immediately balked at the decorative crosswalks for, you know, $84,000. When I consulted with my full-time colleagues, they also were unhappy with that number, which then prompted Mr. Van Tifflin and I to go back to MDA and also speak to our neighboring communities about what their intentions were. In fact, I think it's when Township reached out to us to have a broader conversation. We came up with a plan that's being presented to limit the improvements to what we thought was reasonable. Clinton Township agreed with us. I think they're going to mirror our, our approach to it on their side of Hall Road. And Chesterfield also agreed with us, but in their terms that they only have one intersection to be concerned about. So. That's just what I wanted to add to this discussion.
Thank you. I concur with the decision made here today. I think nobody drives down M59 to enjoy the decorative crosswalk. People drive down M59 and get someplace. So our objective should be to fund those items that are important to the safety of the residents. And those would be the adequate sidewalks and the lighted signs at the major intersections where, you know, maybe more necessary, as opposed to the less major roads where they, where they still cross M59, they stop at M59. So this is an effort to allocate the resources. We think that it's going to really be best used to provide for a safe commute for residents instead of fancy crosswalks that I don't think many people care about in this circumstance.
One other note that I should mention is in our discussions internally, the, the line share, this is the sidewalk expansions. And it also, this sort of fits into our sidewalk gap voucher program. And you know, I'm comfortable with assigning a portion of that amount, which has already been budgeted for this coming year to cover that $80,000, $85,000. So most of this has already been accounted for.
I do have a quick question. When you talk to Clinton Township, did they say about, they feel the same way about the decorative crosswalk?
They do.
Because we do have some.
We do. A number of years ago, I don't know what we paid for at the time. Four years ago, so. Yeah, we were all kind of in the same boat. There had been a preliminary approval of this project. How long ago was that, Jim?
Back in June, last year.
A third of this new number, and when MDA sent out the new numbers, everybody was shaken by it. It appeared that they had left out a number of things in their original cost estimates. That's why we sort of all got together and came up with a plan that would have worked better for us.
We couldn't find a way to get a bigger discount for unattractive crosswalks or semi-decorative crosswalks.
I just didn't want to be the only one that didn't have the decorative crosswalk.
I wouldn't have minded. That's fine. We talked about that option too.
Just one quick follow-up. So this decorative sidewalk.
I'm talking about crosswalk.
Crosswalk. This is the ones that are.
I suggest you stop in the middle of Hall Road and admire it when you cross it.
The number of ones I see, but what I do want to make sure, we're still having all the safety products that go involved.
All the lights.
The lights, the dots, the.
The striping.
Just not the stained concrete that looks like cobblestone.
Yeah. Then we all drive over, we all break over.
The color changes real quick as you go 55 miles.
You only go 55.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no more discussion, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the MDA improvements on Hall Road, the amount of $116,955.10. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Supervisor. Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries.
Does the Chairman move items 15 through 18 in their entirety? Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, I understand that that will be a single vote, combining the agenda items.
That is correct.
Yes.
Are you naming this consent?
Oh, without objection. If it's only about the single out windows, I would move it from there.
Hey, Mr. Van Tifflin, can you give us some history on these documents?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The first one is at the, for the intersection improvements at 25 Mile and Romeo Plank slash Greshit. The other three are for the widening of 23 Mile Road between Hydrate and Carr. For these particular four parcels, the McComb County Department of Roads has had to additionally condition, condition case for each one of these. Township, McComb Township has existing easements on each of these properties, which means that part of the coordination that the county has to take is to file suit, basically gets McComb Township. Because we are party, we have an interest on that, on those properties. So what they are requesting is that we enter into this agreement, which would essentially waive our requirement to receive just compensation, which makes sense because this is, all of these projects are being shared in cost between the county and the township. M59, or I'm sorry, 23 Mile Road is actually partly paid by the federal government. It will be paid equal share with the county. So with this, it just simplifies the paperwork that the county has to do in order to obtain the right of way that's necessary for these road improvements that obviously Township is wanting to have done as well. So we reviewed the documents, legal councils reviewed the documents, and we are recommending approval. We have to answer any questions.
Mr. Van Tifflin? Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing now, there is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve these four agenda items, which are all agreements to preserve easements and consent to taking. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Supervisor. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Van Tifflin? Moving on to item 19 is a rezoning request approval, agricultural to residential, one-family urban, located on the west side of Carr Road and one-half mile south of 23 Mile Road. Permanent parcel ID number 08-22-200-009. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support? Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The property in question is located south of Vesper Drive, just west of Carr Road. It's currently part of the Shawnee Elementary School property. When Vesper was installed, a few smaller pieces of the property found themselves separated from the main parcel. And the parcel is not really of value to the school any longer. It's actually a bit of a burden as they have to maintain it. And it's across the street from the main parcel, as I mentioned. They're seeking to have it rezoned to R1, to be developed as a single-family home, which would match the neighboring subdivision of Gateway Farms. Property was reviewed by all of the internal departments and recommended for approval. It's already been granted the needed variance to make the property developable. And it was recommended for approval for rezoning by the planning commission by unanimous vote.
Mr. Box? Any questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing now, there is a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve this rezoning request. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 20 is a resolution designating new North Branch Library as the preferred location for Detroit Institute of Arts public art project in McComb Township. Is there a motion? Chairman, I'll make that motion in a second. I'd like to give a little background.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know, residents of McComb Township are assessed a tax for the Detroit Institute of Arts. Last year, residents sent $750,000 in Detroit Institute of Arts. And as a way of, if the DIA designate their appreciation for that, they've decided to dribble out a small project for every community in McComb County for a token project as a way of refunding a minimal amount of. for a token project as a way of refunding a business school amount of money back. So we are allowed to designate where we would like our home to be located from the DIA. And being that we have a new library being built here and due to finish this year, I thought it would be an appropriate location to designate the library for the art project that we will be so generously receiving from Detroit Institute of Arts. Now, we have to answer any questions. Thank you, answered them all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Mr. Gillette for that explanation.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, where maybe, I don't know, where do you want to answer? Were these sometimes located in the parks in Macomb Township?
There's only, to my knowledge, thank you, Mr. Trustee Cusmano, to my knowledge, there's been a mural done in Romeo. And a, which is in downtown area, downtown Romeo. And a mural also done in East Point, I believe. Which I also believe, I'm not sure if in the park or the downtown section. So each community can designate, or is being asked to designate where we would like the project. Which could be a mural, could be a sculpture, could be some other form of art. And you know, I just thought that given that the library is being built brand-new and sort of located by our recreation center in Town Hall, that it would be a good designation, location to designate.
Mr. Chairman, by the way, Mr. Cusmano, are you referring to the sculptures that were placed in front of Town Hall and throughout the area in previous years?
No, but you can speak on that point. I was speaking about the classical art that was put on two colors on Town Hall. That, the same.
I don't believe so, trustee Cusmano. What we're talking about here is a permanent installation, not the rent art that they, that they, you know, give you a peek at while they grab your money. This would be a permanent installation of some sort, whether it's a mural or a sculpture, as opposed to just a temporary situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question, trustee. Did we get a budget on it?
No, I'm told that the projects can, are, they're anticipating between $10,000 and $20,000 in that range for the project. And I've talked to the gentleman, the library director, and they identified a couple of locations at the library. Hopefully something, one of them at the location will be easily viewed from Breton Road and from Recreation Center, Town Hall, and the Town Square. So I think that might lend itself toward more of a sculptures opportunity in that location they picked. So if you've got some suggestions for sculptures, I'd be happy to relay them to the library and the DIA.
Yeah, I'll think of something.
Thank you. I welcome any suggestions that they have to relay, whether he has a sculpture idea.
Maybe some, and would that, would that be invited to the residents too?
I think that's a great idea. I'd be happy to entertain any residents' ideas of what type of sculpture might be appropriate. I know that the, the DIA explained that first they need to know where we think would be appropriate location. And then they allegedly engage in a process of engaging the community in the process. So they will follow that process of, you know, that they're putting together to engage the community. So there'll be an opportunity, as I mentioned, for residents to actually weigh in and suggest some ideas.
Time frame.
Unfortunately, it's unlikely to be completed by the time the library is unveiled. But we're hoping that we will have a project to be announced when the library is, grand open library.
Thank you for all that information, Mr. Gillette.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for one privilege to, for clerk Posey to finish her expose on the metallic art that was impressive of course.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. I just feel like it was a ticker forward that is called the Inside Out program.
Okay, that's concluded and.
That's correct. There's nothing presented to the supervisor's office, to my knowledge, to move forward with that at this time.
And who was involved in that?
Supervisor and the deputy supervisor in the previous years.
Thank you.
Hearing no more discussion, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to designate the library as the location for DIA's art project in Macomb Township. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to item 21. We have a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of 2021 refunding bonds. Is there a motion? I'll move, Mr. Chair. Support. Smith, you on?
I am, yes. Good evening. Before you tonight, the township has been advised that we may achieve an interest cost savings of approximately $1 million over the next 10 years by refunding one of its water and sewer bonds, series 2010, and one building authority bond, series 2011. Of that savings, approximately $259,000 would be from the general fund, $91,000 from the park and rec fund, and approximately $657,000 interest savings for the water and sewer fund. If approved, the refunding bond series 202021 would be in an amount not to exceed $7,500,000. So tonight, I'm asking for a motion to approve and execute the resolution in your packet authorizing issuance of the 202021 refunding bonds in the amount not to exceed $7,500,000. I also have Steve from, sorry, Ben Zinsky and company on the line if, if the board has any questions for him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this motion?
I just had a quick question, just as an explanation, I guess. I would assume this is very similar to refinancing your mortgage, where you're just getting a better rate, you're paying off the old debt, putting a new debt on, but at a better rate.
That, that's correct.
Yes.
It would be at a lower interest rate.
Comment that I appreciate the work of our bond council and of our finance department in bringing this before us. Because this, you know, opportunity to save a million dollars by refinancing is very beneficial to the community. So I want to thank them for their work to do this, to bring this before the board.
There's no more discussion, there is a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucio, to adopt the resolution for the bond refunding. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Item 22 is a request to approve the purchasing policy and procedure updates. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Janet, are you on the line?
I am. Good evening, board. In its continuing commitment to promote effective, professional, and consistent procurement of goods and services for Macomb Township, the finance department is proposing update to the October 28, 2020 purchasing policy. The update to the purchasing policy includes language that, for competitive purchases that was moved from section 3.1 to the preface, and that's for clarity. And modifications were, were added for the pre-approvement procurement section of the policy. The pre-approved procurement section was added to address items such as software renewals and unique procurements that require board approval but will not be competitively bid. And the unsold surplus property section was revised to allow for the sale of surplus property using other alternative methods after unsuccessful public offerings have been undergone. And then finally, the quick reference chart and the table content was revised to reflect these changes. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by clerk Posey, to amend the purchase. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
And supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 23 is a request to approve the pre-approved procurement procedure, procurement recommendation for 2021.
Okay, so.
Okay, now you're on, Janet.
Okay. The purchasing policy requires competitive bidding of commodities that individually or aggregately exceed $5,000 in a fiscal year. In accordance with the purchasing policy, pre-approval may be requested for specific procurements for various reasons. Although it's the goal of the purchasing and finance department to increase competitive bidding, the procurements listed on the attached are for budgeted items which are not planned for competitive bidding for the indicated contract terms and are being recommended for pre-approval. And we have a list of a few items on the, that are in the board packet that will not be competitively bid. And based on the nature of the item, we are suggesting that the approvals be given for these items prior to us having the final expenditure billed to us.
Get a couple of.
At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can we get a couple of examples of the items that we would not, that we're including in this proposal and sort of the rationale?
Okay, so for example, our website is, the vendor for that is Civic Plus. A website, we just, we bid that out in 2015. And we pay annually for that. Our estimated annual expenditure for that is $8,720. At this point in time, if you were to totally redo the website, it would obviously be very, very much more expensive. And it's not something that you do on a routine basis. And that is one example. Then we have a couple of other software packages. And then another example, a lot of times relates to election materials, where you have a vendor that services Macomb County clerks. And it is prudent to stick with that vendor because they, you know, depending, depending on the materials that you're getting from them, you know, it can help, election materials are temperamental with, along with the equipment, they have to match. Inserts have to fit into envelopes, so you don't necessarily want to quote all that and separate or have different vendors for various things. And so those are some examples of things that we would put on the list. And those are things that are really in the township's best interest not to competitively bid because you're not going to make major, major changes to certain things.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, there is a motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the pre-approved procurement recommendations for 2021. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Moving on to trustee comments. Trustee Cusmano.
What comments does he have?
Trustee Oliver.
Yes. Do you want to give a shout-out? Macomb County Health Department. I got my second vaccination today. It was so smooth and so well organized. I spent, from the time I pulled into the party not to the time I left, it was less than a half an hour. The people were very, very polite, very organized. That's all. It just, so I encourage anyone that's maybe on the fence of getting a shot, to get a shot. I didn't get a lollipop though, that's the only thing, but I'm still, I was very, very proud of how they did that. Just so organized, so, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Lucio. What comments? Trustee Nevers.
I would just like to ask trustee Oliver, if you can raise your hand.
Can you not? I could do jumping jacks.
Excellent.
I didn't even, I, I actually, my first shot, I was actually looking at something else, and he said, "You're done." And I went, "What?" And then the second shot, I watched, and I never felt it.
I was told that after the shot, some people.
No.
Okay.
But there was two things I did. I drank a lot of water. I went right back to work. It affects people different. But I was just so impressed how organized it was. So that's all.
Trying to be clever.
Excuse me?
He's just trying to be clever.
No, that's right.
Thanks for that. Lost on trustee Oliver. Treasurer's comments.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Looking back on today's meeting, I, I realize that there may have been a point where I came across as potentially snarky toward the DIA tax in some capacity or negative toward it. And I would like to state that while I do not support taxing anybody for art purposes, I do want to make sure that that, that tone is not meant to be extended to the library or to the project that's being presented. The library's been great partners in working toward this end. And I hope that the final project is something that does add a sense of place and some value to our community. So at least don't interpret my criticism of the tax in general with the project that we have moving toward, which I'm enthusiastic about.
I don't know what snark you're referring to, but.
Yeah.
Moving on to clerk Posey.
I would just like to remind residents that we offer free notary service. We get a lot of calls looking to see if we offer the service. We do it no charge. And there are five notaries in the clerk's department. So you can walk in at any time and there should be somebody available to notarize any documents for you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor has no comments tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion to adjourn by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.